She's still ugly.
We'll now start the meeting.
Frank Forrie.
Here.
Marshall Golf.
Here.
Lilly Junkins.
Here.
Gary Keat.
Here.
Jim Malfojo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moreno. Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
This evening, our prayer and pledge is by Councilmember Keith.
Your recital, Fortisburg.
Our Father. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. On earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us. In me is not a teaching to temptation. But deliver us from evil. The nigh is the kingdom. The power. And glory forever. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands. One nation under God. And indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of this regular session of September 3, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Without objection, the minutes are agreed to.
Approval of the minutes of the regular session of February 4, 2021.
Go ahead.
Without objection, the minutes are agreed to.
Petitions, communications, and public hearings. Mark Starkey Jr. of 177 Denny Street, Philipby, West Virginia wishes to address council concerning a meeting of residents and business owners after council.
I'm Mike Starkey. Uh, thank you all for inviting us this evening. Uh, I want to let you all know that after the council tonight, uh, we're gonna have a group of people, business owners, citizens, people that are concerned about the situations happening in or at Fortisburg. Uh, would like to invite any and all of you to stay and, and, and participate. Uh, I want to thank Lilly for making that arrangement and Ryan Kennedy also. Uh, Mr. Fulk, I'd like to thank you for being on top of getting, uh, the property over on Milford Street boarded up and, and boarded up again. And, uh, it's, it's, it's a bad situation that I'm not sure what the answer is, but a lot of people aren't feeling they're being heard.
Excuse me, can you step a little closer to the mic, please, so we can hear you?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, a lot of people feel that they are being heard, that their concerns are being addressed as, as property owners or, or business owners in the area. And, uh, they would like to, to, to meet with some people and, and as a group and see if we can come up with some kind of solution to help the situation somehow. Because if it's out of control, it's, it's absolutely out of control, the fires, uh, the property damage. And there seems to be, from firsthand experience, no consequences for, for busting in somebody's house and, and destroying property when they're trying to renovate it. And people are putting thousands and thousands of dollars into places and buying these places, not all of them, but some of them, and, and trying to, uh, make a safe place for a rental or, or business. And, uh, a lot of people feel that that needs to be addressed. So if anybody would like to stay, I appreciate if any and all of you, uh, police chief, uh, all of you, if you'd like to stay afterwards and, and hear, you know, what people had to say, their concerns, and maybe we can come up with some kind of solution or...
Have you all, have you all met with, I don't mean to interrupt you, have you all met with our police chief at all?
Uh, to, to make that experience brief, uh, we had a break in and property damage. They ran the guy off and we collected the drugs and paraphernalia and I delivered them to the police station downstairs. Uh, the two officers was pretty nice about it. Uh, I tried to meet with the police chief, uh, I believe it was last week, and, and the secretaries or personnel in the office, that they act like you're here to aggravate them. That they was angry. And, uh, I don't, uh, I'd rather bring it to the police department to, to make sure it gets disposed of properly. I didn't know for sure what, what everything was. So me and the property owner decided to do the best to bring it in. And I will say the officers that did show up and respond, they, they came out, they went through the houses, and, uh, the only part we don't understand is why, why we can't do nothing to, to solve the problem. And, and I understand that it's a big problem.
I think our police chief is, uh, would like to say something.
First of all, I heard you talking to hold on. I think I seen a whole face of them. Drugs, wrong drugs, back as a shepherd. They're not letting, uh, the kid, harassment, being tested. Corrosing the wall on credit cards, gift cards, where it's where, uh, it wasn't a drug. And the state law of trespassing is drastically, they leave. Pretty much what you did.
I understand, I'm, I'm not here to give anybody a hard time. I wasn't sure if they was drugs or not. So that's, that's why I was wrong.
I was involved, I don't care, so.
Okay.
Just a couple drugs, I think was done.
My apologies for assuming they was drugs. I, we wasn't sure, we thought the best policy was to, to bring them to, to where they could be disposed of.
And the, and the reason I ask that question is because I've been in that situation before as the chief. And I would have liked, uh, there was times that I would have liked to have addressed the problem myself without it coming to council. Uh, and, and I believe that, uh, you know, we've got a professional chief and, and, uh, I know he's diligent in, in his duties and, and to making sure that, uh, that, you know, he, he talks to people when they want to talk to him. So, uh, I just wanted to, to make sure that what the interaction there was.
Okay, I'm, we're not, this, the, the meeting of the people is not to, to point fingers or point blame, is just to try and come up with a resolution. Uh, we're not blaming, I'm not blaming him.
I understand.
I'm not blaming you all, it's just people trying to...
And, and we want it as bad as you do, uh, everybody up here, so, but we just want to make sure that we're going in the right steps.
Right.
And, and we've, and we've exceeded the five minutes at this point, I'll, you know, but I just wanted to give you a chance, if you wanted to take a moment to wrap up.
Thank you. That, that's all I asked, uh, thank you for hearing me out.
Alright, thank you.
City managers report an update.
Sure.
From the manager's office, the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget proposal has been completed and a work session to present the budget will be held next Wednesday evening at 5:00 PM in council chambers. Candidate forums for the upcoming municipal election will be available March 1st at the city clerk's office and they will be open for the next two Saturdays after that during the day for candidates to file. Information is available on our website. For the police department, the department has created a special task force that is going out at any given hour to search every condemned structure within the city. Our two newest officers will begin training at the West Virginia State Police Academy on March 22nd, 2021. We are working out the kinks on the new cameras to be placed in various locations throughout the city. From the fire department, two AEDs were replaced on our fire engines. Our firefighters responded to a structure fire of a vacant house and saved the neighbor's house with very little damage that was six feet away. And thank you, Sheets, for the donation of hot chocolate during that incident. And if the fire department is also continuing to provide COVID-19 vaccine, vaccination support at the armory. For the finance department, they responded to several FOIA requests that were completed, such as police and fire pensions, wages, and purchase orders. 124 invoices for underpayment of BNO taxes were mailed out in the amount of $54,482.73. The department also engaged a third-party agency for COBRA administrative services to ensure continual compliance with the COBRA Act. From the city parks, proposals for the operation of vending machines at Frank Gloria Field, indoor practice facility, Riverbend Miniature Golf, and Clarksburg Rec Center were opened today and will be presented to the board at their next meeting. Discussions were held between the Clarksburg Visitors Bureau to discuss working together on a new project, or new projects. The USDA has performed some harassment of the geese and the do not feed the geese signage has been installed. From the Robinson Grant Performing Arts Center in February, uh, the Robinson Grant Performing Arts Center is presenting the second season of the Ghostlight series with the theme of Broadway Valentine, which will air every Friday in February at 7:00 PM, in addition to a bonus episode on Valentine's Day. The series is an ode to musical theater which pays homage, homage to Broadway's, to Broadway during these dark times and features local artists performing classic hits. All episodes can be viewed on the Robinson Grant's Facebook page and YouTube channel. For the code department, the department issued 26 building permits of a total job cost of $324,375.48. 26 notice of violations were issued and 17 citations were issued. 20 reboards were ordered for vacant structures. 11 residential and 10 commercial, commercial inspections were performed. All employees attended an MS4 training seminar that was held by Thrasher Engineering. From the Public Works, the crew's been very busy with snow removal and boarding up vacant structures. The city hall and Public Works building was repainted, though the repainting is nearly completed. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant, the construction at the plant has slowed due to weather conditions, and several employees from the plant attended the MS4 training seminar that was also held by Thrasher Engineering, Thrasher Engineering. And that is the end of my report.
Unfinished business. To conduct a public hearing on the proposed adoption on third and final reading of a bond authorizing ordinance of the city which authorizes the refunding and repayment in full of the city's outstanding water revenue bonds, Series 2014A, and the issuance by the city of its water refunding revenue bonds, Series 2021A, in an amount not to exceed $3,750,000. For the purpose of financing the refunding of the Series 2014A bonds, the payment of cost of issuance of the Series 2021A bonds and related costs.
We will now open the public hearing. No one wants to speak for or against me, do so at this time. We will now close the public hearing.
To con-
Bond, you gotta do a separate case.
Separate, I'm just, to consider for adoption on third and final, final reading following a public hearing thereon of a bond authorizing ordinance of the city which authorizes the refunding and repayment in full of the city's outstanding water revenue bonds, Series 2014A, and the issuance by the city of its water refunding revenue bond, Series 2021A, in an amount not to exceed $3,750,000 for the purpose of financing the refunding of the Series 2014A bonds, repayment of cost of issuance of the 20, Series 2021A bonds and related costs.
Okay, now a motion be prepared.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of second and final reading and public hearing of an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the codified ordinances.
We will now open the public hearing. No one wants to speak for or against me, do so at this time. We will now close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
New business. Consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg to amend Article 1505 of the codified ordinances to modify civil service status of fire marshal and assistant fire marshals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of first reading of an ordinance designating authority to the city manager to sell personal property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of adoption of a supplemental parameters resolution of the city which would approve the parameters for certain terms of the water refunding revenue bond, Series 2021A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution of the city of Clarksburg, West Virginia, creating the Clarksburg Arts and Cultural Committee.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution of the council of the city of Clarksburg appointing a member to the Clarksburg Visitors Bureau.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to amend the resolution.
How so?
I'd like to name Tori Bedford to the Clarksburg Visitor Bureau.
Do we have a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, um, a motion to amend doesn't have discussion, so we go straight to the vote. All in favor of amending to add Tori Bedford in place of Lisa Sutton, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion to amend carries. So now, we would need a motion on, on passage.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution of, of the council of the city of Clarksburg, appointing a member to the Clarksburg Visitor Bureau, Tori Bedford.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, okay, motion carries and passes.
Consideration of an automatic aid agreement for fire protection and other emergency services.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease and option agreement for the use of the parking lot located next to city hall.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of approving the update to the policies and procedures regarding the P-CART program revised February the 18th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration to waive competitive bidding to award an emergency demolition of the fire damaged structure located at 306 Milford Street.
So moved.
Second.
We, we have to, we have to name the, uh, the company and the dollar amount.
Mr. Mayor.
I figure.
Move that we accept the low bid from Empire Builders of $19,000?
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Council comments.
Council comments, start with Councilman Malfojo.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask everyone to keep Councilman Moreno in your prayers, please. Uh, this morning, on my way to work at 6:45 from the Joyce Street Bridge to the Adamston Trussel, there are 12 lights out on 50. And, uh, don't we pay First Energy a lump sum each month, Mr. City Manager?
I believe so, we did, uh, Mr. Workman looked into that. They are not replacing those lights because there's issues with the conduit and they, the state does have a project, uh, to upgrade all of those lights, they just have not, uh, started.
Did they cut our, did they cut our monthly bill?
I'll ask.
Because going up 50 towards the top of Bridgeport Hill, there's six out on, on the, on the west, or the eastbound side.
Oh, there's, there's-
I mean, it's, you know, if we're paying $300,000 a month to First Energy, I mean, we ought to be getting our money's worth, I would think.
I will look into that.
Okay, and lastly, folks, if you see something, say something, no matter how insignificant you may think it is, please call 911. If you see something, say something, we've got to put a stop to these backpackers and homeless folks and, and, you know, I think, uh, you know, for lack of a better word, if, if, if we call and the police arrive, they're gonna consider it hassling and, and maybe they'll move on. But I just want to say, if you see something, please say something and call 911. And everybody have a nice weekend. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Golf.
I just, uh, want to congratulate the, uh, Public Works Department, they're doing a real good job getting the, uh, streets clean, uh, with the recent snow that we've had, and, uh, they've, they've done an excellent job. Also, uh, the fire department, our interim chief, uh, being proactive and, and, uh, reaching out and, uh, uh, trying to get our ISO rating down, uh, it's a good job. Uh, police department for, uh, creating that special task force that's going out and searching every condemned structure within the city. Um, that, that's what we need to do, root them out. And, uh, you know, our, our workers are second to none, uh, in every department. I, I think that all our code enforcement, everybody's working together and it shows. That's all I have.
Um, Councilman Ferrari on, uh, on the internet.
Uh, just a couple things, you know, just to follow up with Marshall. Kudos to the, uh, fire department with that, that fire on Milford Street. And again, the Public Works Department, you know, 4 o'clock in the morning, I hear the scrapers out there on, in our area, and I know that's the way it is all over the city. They do a great job of snow removal. Uh, and the last thing is, I know we awarded this, I'm happy we awarded this contract tonight for this burn structure, and I think what we need to do in the future is exactly what the city manager has done, is move quickly anytime we have a burn structure, rather than waiting to get four, or five, six, you know, sitting all over the city. I think that, you know, we need to find the money somehow if we have this situation to bring these things down immediately, that's all I have.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Keith.
All good comments so far, I'm right on board with a lot of stuff Marshall and Frank both said there, uh, especially the, the public works. Uh, I'd actually made a couple, a couple comments here recently about it on Facebook. You know, I go around the area a lot and, you know, compared to our surrounding counties and our surrounding cities, you know, we just have world-class public works as far as cleaning up the roads. It's really unbelievable for the size of city, we are, how good a job they do. Also want to comment on this special task force, going out and checking these vacant structures. This is, you know, a problem that we've been dealing with for years, um, you know, and I think we've been kind of spotty in doing this, you know. When interim chief Snyder was here, he did it a little bit, we had two guys going around and checking everything and we kind of, we kind of keep going through this, you know, phases of catching it up and letting it go, catching it up and letting it go. I hope the forming of an official task force is gonna make this something that, you know, we just start accepting as a reality of something we're gonna have to keep doing. Um, because I think we are a little behind again, and I think, you know, the, the backpackers make it hard on us, especially when it gets cold out, they start tearing the boards off all these buildings. Um, and I've been a witness to these guys out checking, I mean, they're finding tons and tons of buildings. So I hope that part of this task force is that the next step of that information getting passed on to public works and getting out there and getting something actually done with getting it boarded up after that is also happening. That, I guess, will be something that remains to be seen in the future, but this is a great first step. Um, we have a, a big budget we're about to start working on, this is a big time of year for city council and, uh, you know, the, the reason I wanted to be on this council and what I'm gonna be pushing as part of this budget is, you know, we have a, a great chief who's taking advantage of this money and, you know, we're using it the right way. Uh, we got a great new public works director, I'm sorry, code enforcement director, and, you know, this is the biggest problem facing our city. And I hope the rest of the council's with me on, this budget needs to reflect that. I mean, I don't know where we're gonna find the money or if we're gonna have to make some hard decisions and cut some things, but the police department and code enforcement are what I want to focus on in this budget. I really, really want to see 50 police officers. That's my goal, I hope we can make it happen. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Junkins.
Yes, I'd like to kind of echo what Mr. Malfojo said about having, um, a little bit of time to pray for Councilman Moreno or Vice Mayor Moreno. Um, also that this has been a particularly dark, long, cold winter, and, um, in some ways it, it kind of reflects what our city's been through. We've been, we've been through the wringer, Clarksburg has had some pretty hard times. Um, but what I want the citizens of Clarksburg to know is that this is not the Clarksburg of old. We have a different mindset and we have different people that are, that are players in this game. And we care. We want things better. I'm not saying that people didn't in the past. What I'm saying is, we are willing to listen. We are willing to sit with you. We are willing to hear your concerns, we're willing to hear your fears and why you want to leave if you do. And we want it better. Things cannot stay the way they are, it has to change, and we are trying. We had 23 police officers, 25 police officers when I was elected to this council and we're up to 40 some police officers, um, almost fully staffed. Um, that's huge, guys, there is progress being made. Sometimes the progress is not exactly right in front of us. It's not something we can see instantly, and sometimes things have to get worse before they can get better. But we are working, we are trying. The people in the city, I know Mr. Fulk firsthand, cares deeply, he is trying very hard. He has, was left with a lot of things that needed help. And it's not gonna change overnight. Hang in there, keep doing what, what Mr. Malfojo said, see something, say something, talk to us, reach out to us, call us, email us, come to council meetings, talk to us. We do care, everyone on this council cares. And the employees in this city are working hard to try to get us out of this, this situation that we're in. That's all.
Okay. Well, I'll close up again, also offering, um, prayers for the quick recovery of our Vice Mayor, uh, Mr. Moreno. Um, and I don't disagree with a single thing that any of the other members of council said, or hearing their council comments, so I'm not gonna reiterate them all other than me too. Um, but I will just hit a couple of things really quickly. Uh, one is, I'm, one thing that I really like about the, the new agreement of, between the fire departments that we just approved on our end, is that now certain equipment will be able to get to, uh, to a fire or another, or another incident faster, which could potentially save lives. And really, I mean, when it comes down to, we're talking public safety, we're talking saving people's lives. And so I'm very excited that this new arrangement is going to, is going to bring about that. Um, also, I'm really glad that we are, as, um, as several members of council have said, that we're, we're jumping right on when a structure burns, we're getting rid of it quickly now, we're not letting it fester in the neighborhood, and so I, that's something I definitely want to see continue. Um, the budget that we're gonna start working on, I agree with, uh, Councilman Keith that, um, it needs to be focused on public safety, on code enforcement, on, on really kicking this problem. And I believe that at least we have a really good starting point in the budget that, that our, our city manager has given us. But of course, you know, as council, we probably will make some tweaks before it becomes final. But I think it's at least a really, really good start. And, uh, the last thing, I, I will definitely compliment our, um, Public Works and the way they've been working hard to clear snow and so forth from our roads. Um, I will say that, uh, I'm not go, I, I thought about actually naming the town, but I'm gonna be nice and not do that. Uh, but I used to live in another town once upon a time, about an hour north of here. And, um, the, uh, and it seemed like every time it snowed there, it caught the city by surprise. Like they hadn't figured out yet that we're in West Virginia. Like they hadn't figured out yet that we're in West Virginia and it snows here sometimes. But fortunately, we have, you know, down here, we know it snows and we're ready and prepared to deal with it. So I'm very proud because I've seen the alternative and it's not pretty. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Can I address Councilperson Perkins, please?
No, this is not the public...
You may do it after the meeting, that'd be great.
So do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries, we return. Thanks, everybody.